You're tuned into Inside Lowell. Inside Lowell podcast brought to you in part by Washington Savings Bank, serving the greater Lowell community for over 130 years. Make the switch now to Washington Savings Bank.
Wellpoint, Unicare is now Wellpoint. New name, same commitment to Massachusetts. At Wellpoint, your whole health is their whole point.
Boston North Company, offering a wide variety of business solutions to help restaurant and retail clients save money. Boston North. Mahoney Oil Company, providing warmth and protection to families in Greater Lowell and Southern New Hampshire since 1925. That's Mahoney Oil. Francis E. Preventa Insurance, for auto, home, business, and life. Trust the agency Greater Lowell has counted on for more than 40 years. Francis E. Preventa Insurance. Go Puff, a grocery store right at your fingertips. Use the code Lowell20 to receive $20 off your first order of $21 plus free delivery. Download the Go Puff app or visit gopuff.com today. And by the Massachusetts Pirates, bringing all the hard hitting action and excitement of arena football to the Songas Center in Lowell. Get your tickets today by visiting masspiratesfootball.com. And now, time for another Inside Lowell podcast. Inside Lowell, if Lowell is your home, this is your place.
Hello again, everyone, and welcome to another Inside Lowell podcast. I am your host, Teddy Panos, coming to you from the Wellpoint studios here in downtown Lowell. Unicare is now Wellpoint, new name, same commitment to its members. At Wellpoint, your whole, your whole health is their whole point. And we thank our friends at Wellpoint for helping to make this podcast possible, all of our podcasts possible. And of course, we thank all of our sponsors for helping to make Inside Lowell possible. And our special guest on this podcast is a city councilor here in the city of Lowell, has been continuously since 2018, when he took the oath of office and had served the term previously as well. Lowell City Councilor Vesna Noon is joining us here in studios for the first time. I'm excited to have you here, counselor.
Thank you, thank you. Hello, everyone. Yes, my name is Vesna Noon and good afternoon, everyone.
Great, great to have you with lots to talk about. You've been a busy man, putting together some motions, some things that you want to focus on. But I want to start with kind of the topic that's been dominating the discussion on the council for the last probably month or so. And that is the development that the Hamilton Canal Innovation District and the Salapoli Proposal that he's trying to get changed. And you guys decided you were going to go into executive session to deal with it. And you went to executive session last night, but it was for a different matter. It wasn't for this. Do you know when the council plans to take this up and have that discussion behind closed doors on how to proceed with what's going on over there?
You're right, you know, the Hampton Canal Innovative District has been in a lot of people mind, including the council. You know, the, this project somehow been delayed. When it was chair, when it was Chair Economic Downtown Subcommittee last term, we brought it up. We have concern around where the development for Salapoli parcel. We know the garage is going to be done soon, which now done. We know that parcel two, three, and four, and five, two, three, and four, supposed to be the high-rise signatures. You know, building 13 to 14 storage. That's supposed to be the ground digging since last year. And it didn't happen. So a lot of frustration in the council part and say, what happened here? You know, why all this delay and why we have no information? So that carry over to the now council, same subcommittee, economic development and downtown subcommittee, which now chaired by the district councilor here in downtown, Wayne Janess, who brought it up. And we had Salapoli came and give us presentation at that subcommittee meeting. At that meeting, we decided to have more discussion around these issues at that executive session. So right now, at the subcommittee meeting, Salapoli presented as to some of the reason why the delay, right? First has to do with title taken, more or less. Agree or not, Sal kind of blaming the previous administration, which is typical, right? That's, that's just scapegoat, somebody else did it, I didn't do it. I, for one, don't think that the tax title thing shouldn't take that, should take that long over years or whatnot. But that has nothing to do with the parcel two, three, and four, and five. It has to do with parcel one. And now that, that wasn't really delay at all, the parking, right? So the next argument, the next presentation or by Sal was has, has to do with interest rate is going up. You know, supplies is increase and labor costs and stuff, you know? When you say that something like that to someone, some council or council in overall, and you. When you say that, while you're doing all this project elsewhere, right? In other city and town and state. And you said, oh, you can't do it here, but you have agreement here. So now Sal asked the DPD, our DPD. Working with Salapoli team to come up with some of those change. The change is not only the, a change in agreement, not only that we taking down two, three, four. From a high-rise, 13 to 14 stories to a five-story wooden building, right? And then the five housing and zoning change. So now the communication, the work is ongoing now between the both party. When that report is done, Teddy, when that report done is going to go to subcommittee. Going to, go into executive session, my apology, going to exec session. That's when we have discussion, we're going to start that discussion. And may have to be what to do with, whether or not you agree with it and what, what plan we have, what option do we have?
Yeah, you may have already answered my question, but I'm going to ask, there's two schools of thought on this. Number one is, hey, look, the world has changed through COVID. Building an office tower is not going to work in 2024 because people are leaving office spaces, et cetera. The, so just let him build because nobody else has built anything there anyway. The other school of thought is, hey, did you see what UMass Lowell is doing over there? Let's be patient, we've already been patient for 15 years or more. For patient, another couple of years, maybe something comes in and somebody wants to come in there and develop that in, you know, industrial or business component. What, if you had, if you had to make a decision today, what school of thought are you in?
I'll take the latter one, take the latter one because you see the, the East Campus formerly and now Link. Link started way after the Hampton Canal big plan. When Link started, I would say, hmm, maybe five years ago. When Chancellor Chan was, when President Man was Chancellor UMass Lowell. And pass, you know, now Chancellor Chan to, you know, looking at that project, that area, Tenacres and the East Campus. And now, look what happened, the last couple of weeks, everyone is coming to Lowell. You know, everyone coming to Lowell, including, and now they bring in this big company, Draper.
Yep.
And it's like, Draper, what Draper doing in Lowell? It's got to be something good. And that's why they're here. And something good is that, you know, you have, you know, developers who willing to put, you know, 80% of their money. The plan was that, what, two point something billion dollars, something?
I think eight hundred million, but probably going to go over. But you're right, 80% of that is private development. The rest is a couple of university dorms and.
The rest is, at my understanding, the rest of the money will come from a university, local, state, and federal, right? Money to do this. And this project is really, very, very fascinating and very great for the city in term of new revenue. And this create, this project's going to create, you know, 2,000 job, permanent job and housing, 500 housing unit. And new tax revenue for the city is almost $4 million a year. And that should be all completed 2027. A little patient, just like you said, a year or two patient, or maybe during that time, other developers will look for. Land to develop, parcel to develop, and they don't have it over there in the Link area, the East Campus. Maybe they wonder, it's not that far away, that's just a walking distance. That is something that we need to leave that option, option open, need to think about seriously. With the remaining parcel in the Hampton Canal District. I believe we have parcel 14, 15, 16, 17, and maybe whatever parcel with the Salapoli thing all add up. And, you know, and between the new developers that the managers and his team working to trying to bring in. And between the link, you know, giving a couple more years, we probably going to have a good tax revenues that, you know, we can avoid raising tax to taxpayers every year.
Is there room for negotiation in your mind if Mr. Poli comes back and says, okay, I understand you don't want that five-story housing? Stick build, as they call it, a wooden building, but I can't build a 13-story office tower. How about eight, nine, 10-story office tower with maybe some housing up above? And, you know, commercial in the offices in the middle and maybe some retail down below. Is it, should, should there be some negotiation here? Or is it either time to do what was signed in the contract or cut, cut ties?
The council very open, you know, as a whole, very open to discussion, to, you know, negotiation, you know? Reasonable negotiation. Right, it's, you know, we're not going to, or I'm not, I'm not going to give, you know, the whole kitchen sink. To any developer for that matters.
So it sounds like you're, you're going to hold off for some kind of commercial development there, something more than what was recently proposed.
I think too, I mean, even the, the proposal that Sal proposed with regard to parcel two, three, and four. He's too talking about some commercial downstairs as well, you know, restaurants and stuff like that, just but of five wooden storage, you know? So, but still, we still have, his team still have discussion with the council, with the DPD team. And, and one that report submitted to at the exec session, we will have that discussion. And as I said, the council as a whole, very open to discussion.
Do you anticipate that report and that discussion taking place next week or how far away do you think it is?
I, you know, now it's been since the last subcommittee meeting, it's been three weeks already. So I would say maybe two more weeks or so, maybe by then, after the next, if there's a next meeting coming, it'd be the next meeting after that. We should have report and it shouldn't take that long.
All right, let's talk about a couple of other things you've been working on last night. You had a motion regarding public safety and trying to explore ways to get more cameras into. Were you thinking of the downtown or throughout the city by using either government buildings or other organizations? And maybe some, some businesses that could have cameras installed? What, what are you hoping to accomplish there, counselor?
Yeah, that, I think true is that, you know, now that the city had fully employ, fully employ body cameras. With all the officers, you know, out there cruiser and, you know, it's good to have it. Partly because it's a way to, you know, gather information, but also transparency, right? For officers invalidating, you know, what officer said in, in, in term of, in his or her report. And could be also used as a way to settle case in court. So when you have, you know, the footage, video footage from the camera from the stores and stuff, also help in term of, you know, a deter any criminal activity, right? You know, they know that, hey, this store have cameras, right? Even just the next, the next store has it and you don't have it, you know, still, you can take, you can ask for footage from the one that has. So deter people from commit that crime in the first place. Second, if, if that's not enough deterrent, crime happen, you know? But with that video footage, you know, one can help. The detective in term of canvassing and looking for the suspect, you know, in that video footage. And, and you can also use that, I mean, I mean, in cases for prosecution, you can use that to help, you know, settle the case. To help, you know, bring the case forward and whatnot. I, I think it's, it's a way to, if we, if we have the grant, I'm not sure that grant's there. But this day and age, you know, modern technologies is, is, there's a way to solve crime is there. And you, I'm asking that the police department, you know, looking at the Department of Justice. Looking at the executive office of public safety for, for grant, that will do that, you know? So, yeah.
Okay, the other component of public safety is fire, the fire departments. And as you're, you are the chair of the public safety subcommittee, you would put a motion forward, uh, I believe, April 2nd. You, and we're still waiting for the report, but you were asking to kind of see which fire station repair projects? Kind of the timeline on and which ones had priority, et cetera. Is that more from a, from a funding, like you, you're trying to see if the funding exists for it? Are you more concerned about how much time it's taking to repair some of these projects? Because we've known for a long time, a lot of those firehouses are, are very old and in need of major repairs.
I'm not the only counselors who filed motion surrounding us, having concern about the debilitating of the, the firehouse, fire station. Many of my counsel did the same thing, we've done it for many years now. And we know that some firehouses, because look, a lot of our firefighter, like, they practically live there when they work. I mean, I mean, and there's one of frontline or first responder who save life. And they live in the air, the, the, the building that debilitated. I mean, you need to take care of them. I mean, when you see the picture, like, how can this happen in the, the city building? You know, the firehouse, a fire station. So right now, the study has been done as far as what need to be done on certain firehouse, right? The monies is there, it's a matter of, you know, putting the, the RP out there. And I say, look, if DPW people have so much work to do already, cannot do that. And then farm it out, you know, subcontract, contract it out to our local business people that doing those work. You can, you know, farm it out to three or four or five of them to do it, start it right at the same time. Because it's not the question of money, it's a question of getting done.
So the money is there.
Some money is there, not all of them, but also the capital, money also put into the capital planning as well. So the manager committed to do that. And so what's the question? The issue remaining right now is that, you know, to get it out to the contractor as fast as we can, to get that project done. And, and I was promised that, you know, it's going to be done soon. I hope it's sooner than, you know, a few, a few months from now.
We'll keep an eye on the upcoming agendas to see if that's actually addressed.
We will keep, we will keep asking that that get done. Because, look, if you have a small hole and not fix it, it turn into big hole, it cost more. So, so you want to, you want to get it done soon.
All right, motion last night, you had a motion about waste management. There's a, I can, I can, so I wrote an article that's up on insideleol.com right now. About the cost just skyrocketing of solid waste and recycling removal. And almost all of it is recycling that has gone crazy, especially since the country of China has stopped buying as of 2018. The world's recyclables and all of the, the trash for that matter. People are upset about the fact that it looks like the trash fees, which I believe are $125 per household.
That's right.
Are going to be raised significantly. That $125 fee hasn't been raised, as I looked at a chart that was published, and I published it since at least 2007. It's been $125, right? And that's, that's always been in a deficit anyway. So the, whether it's a fee or through the general budget, the city is paying for that, the taxpayers are paying for that. Is it really that much of a big deal that the fee is going to go up as opposed to the taxes going up for, for that amount? What's, why are people so surprised that they have to pay more money to get for a service that the costs have skyrocketed on?
Well, I mean, myself included, you know, we don't want to pay for things, you know? Oftentimes we thinks that, you know, all those services, you know, provide to us is, you know, at no cost to, to us. It still costs the city, still costs the cities a lot. But as you mentioned, that the, the annual cost for the city from the waste management. Now go up to $8 million a year, right? Eight million dollar years, and you're talking about, you know, recycling, recycling. You just, don't just talk about recycling, but also talk about the contamination that we have to pay, you know? A half a million dollar or more a year. And, and something need to be done there. Not all, you know, taxpayers should pay for the, 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 the lack of attention. Paying to what to put into the recycle of all their, their neighbor, you know? The fines should be out there and they should go after those fine, you know? I mean, when you start going after people pocket a little bit who are not follow, you know? The, the rule as to what to put into the bin, the contempt, I mean, the recycle bin. Then eventually they're going to stop, they're going to know exactly, they're going to count which items are going to go in there. They're not going to willy-nilly throw everything into it. And then who's going to pay for it? The city's going to pay for it, who? All of us going to pay for it. And that's the problem we face. You know, look, it's 25, $125 a year for that fee, you know? It has been over almost two decades now, you know? I mean, it's, it's time for us to look at, you know, how we can, you know, maybe just increase it enough to really not increase a lot, but increase enough. Back to when you mentioned something to do with the waste management. I think Stuart filed a motion on that because, you know, just about a year now, we are, you know, let a guard down of what waste management, the lack of the incompetent work of the waste management. You know, how we're not pick up things on time and things has been left on the streets and stuff like that. And a lot of us was frustrated at that time, you recall, it was last year.
Yeah, it's actually gotten a little quiet, does that mean that they're doing it better? Or you guys just stopped yelling about it?
Well, no, I mean, what it is, is that, why, why wouldn't they do it better? It's the contracts right around the corner, right? You know, up, up your performance a little bit so that maybe we can get five more years, right? I mean, up your staff a little bit, right? So, so I understand, you know, as business, that's what you want to do, you know? Trying to, you know, please the customer a little bit, you know? You know, when you need to please the customer.
Actually, you're right, their contract is in December, I believe that it's up.
Yeah, December.
So they've got about six or seven months to be on good behavior.
That's right, that's right. So, so that's why I asked that, you know, the managers and his team, you know, start that process now. And start that process and open it up with also possibilities of looking at other provider, right? Maybe divide the city because waste management is a big company, not just doing work in Lowell elsewhere too. Maybe because of their, you know, lack of efficiency in the past and because of their past behavior. Maybe we ought to think about, maybe still have them, but break it down to have other contractors come in as well. Break it down into maybe a section or district, you know, section or district, you know? Maybe not instead of one company, a couple of company. So, so, so that, that idea was put out there as well last night.
Yeah, that's actually a discussion that, that I have heard. I've been in Chelmsford, we, I believe we used to have one company do the solid waste, one company did the recycling. I think they've gone to the same one now, but I, I'd have to double check on that. I'm never there in the morning when the trucks come by. But all of this kind of ties into budgeting reasons. And we're, for those who, I don't know when people are watching this, but we're recording it on Wednesday, May 1st. Pretty soon, you're going to have the, the next budget put in front of you and you're going to have to vote up or down on it. I predicted a 4% budget increase along with all the other fees that are, parking has gone up. We're probably trash fees are going to go up, et cetera. Is there a cutoff point for you as a counselor on how much you think the residents can afford to absorb for another tax increase? We know, they're not, probably not going to stay the same or go down, that one I'm sure about, they're not going down. And they're probably not staying the same. How much of an increase are you comfortable with?
I don't know right now, Teddy. I know that when Manager Golden came in, we have a 5% increase. I couldn't support it. And then we have a 3.5, I think, percent increase. You know, all this increase happen while we have the upper money, $76 million. Right now, we use up almost $40 million already to a lot of other things that need to be done. Like that's not, a lot of things need to be done in term of new fire truck and whatnot, you know, so many other things. Helping with, you know, small businesses, you know, and, and, and kind of like, you know, make the city alive again, sort of downtown. I'm worried that, you know, even with that money, we still increasing tax, property taxes, you know, every year. That upper money is a little less than $25 million left, 21, 22, I believe. Going to be gone next year's. And it's got to be spent by, like you said, 2026. What's going to happen? Where's the new revenues coming in? The new revenue that we're talking about, all this future developments happening, it's not coming soon enough. We need to look at other revenues as quick as possible. And we need to look, stay, you know, being conservative in what we're spending. Prioritize what we're spending on, you know, in term of public safety. Yes, economic development, you know, money, we put a lot of money into it. I'm, I'm going to really study the budget really closely this time and see, you know, what I can support. Because it's a difficult time, difficult time for a lot of people. We've been asking them twice already, first time is big money, you know, 5% and then 3.5 and now what, three, four? They can't, especially, especially. Elder, live on fixed income, cannot support it, they cannot support themselves.
Are, are there any services or efficiencies that you can think of that, that should be looked at either in being eliminated? Or I, I remember, I go back to years ago when then city manager Bernie Lynch, that's how long I've been doing this, by the way, I'm getting old. But Bernie Lynch said, you know, we could save, you know, like 700, $800,000 by doing yard waste every two weeks in the summer. Instead of every week. And everybody lost their mind, they didn't want to give up that service. You know, I talked about the, you know, my article about the, the costs of trash and recycling, you know? The, the recycling is gone through the roof. I don't even think by state law, you can eliminate that at this point. But at some point, the, the people who are complaining about increased taxes have to understand that 80% of your budget is payroll. Payroll, benefits, health insurance for, for your workers. So either you got to start cutting services or you better start cutting payroll. And, and that's where I find nobody wants to make those tough decisions. So I'm curious, are there any areas where you think, you know, maybe we could do without this to save some money?
You know, I, I know that this administrations have put a lot of money into infrastructure. Especially paving and sidewalk and improvement and stuff, almost double. Like last year was double and the plan to do. Last year was double and the plan to do this years as well because people want their the sidewalk. They want their sidewalk, they want their their street clean, their street, you know, pothole issues, some of those things, right? All those services, you know, I understand what you just said too, and the manager said that the same thing. That, you know, a lot of this increase has to do with cost of living, medical and pension and so on and so forth, right? Eighty, eighty-five percent. So the twenty percent, you have to look at where to cut in those twenty percent, right? That that twenty percent we had to cut is a tough. It may be you think it's okay, but somebody else said, no, so so it's gonna be a push and pull. At the end of the day, it gotta be some agreement to that. And it so it's gonna be a very difficult, difficult to look at the fine comb, to look at those cut, really. I mean, even with that, still a difficult decisions.
Yeah, and and I'll tell you, as much as people are complaining, I think Lowell is still a little bit lucky because you're still way under the tax levy, right? Was it twelve? Pretty much every other city is starting to now ask for Prop two and a half overrides. And it's not going well with the voters. I think Westford passed a limited one, but they tried to do something bigger and didn't get it. So we're not there yet in Lowell, but I could see the day where you you might get there.
We, I I think so too, because, you know, when up to a time when, you know, they're saying, I I had enough. That that time will come, you know, and that's why, you know, new revenues is coming in. I also just recently, I know the Housing Subcommittee moving into try to get the city to adopt or or establish the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. There's another, that's one other way to creating new revenue for the city. Similar to CPA, Community Preservation Act. And so those is the money that, you know, if we didn't do it back in two thousand nineteen, we wouldn't have those four, five million dollars, you know, to to do all these things, affordable housing, open spaces, you know, historicals and stuff like that. So same thing, the same same idea around that was Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So the city working on it, the DPD working on with the Housing Subcommittee to try to making sure that we can, you know, start that one as well. So I hope that, you know, that start, that that the council agreed to establish it and and we go from there.
Sounds like it's gonna be a fun couple of weeks coming up on the council floor.
I hope, I mean, maybe in a couple of weeks, maybe in a month or two, that's fine too, you know, as long as that happen.
All right, City Council, Wes Loom, thank you for joining us here in the Well Point Studios.
Thank you, Teddy. Appreciate it.
Always a pleasure and always great to have you joining us as well here on Inside Lowell, as we like to say, Inside Lowell. If Lowell is your home, this is your place. Until next time, stay safe, everybody.